To the Committee of the Whole Work Session today, Tuesday, April 18th, 2023. And if we look, we have our minutes on the agenda. And then our very first item is the Minnesota DNR Aggregate Resource Mapping Program. And we have Matt here, as well as another colleague, Neva, in support.
Present.
To talk a little bit about this tool that we are looking at.
Yeah.
I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Commissioner Sullivan. I want to begin by saying I believe we are going to be calling the DNR momentarily. Correct, James?
Yes.
All right.
I have a few things to remember.
I know, I'm just trying to ease into it. So, yeah, they're expecting our call. They have a presentation that they will give. And so I'm hoping they can answer a lot of the questions that you guys might have, because I probably don't have a lot of the answers. What is the aggregate mapping program and why is the Highway Department interested in it? Because we put a lot of gravel down on roads. So annually, we budget about $150,000. So no matter what, we're spending big money on gravel every year. And the quality of gravel really is different from one pit to another. And so we want to ensure that the county is getting its bang for its buck in terms of quality of gravel, so that our roads can improve. It's really a simple equation. The DNR approached us sort of indirectly because we talked to them about the Irish Creek Pit, which is out in Oakland.
James, you're working with Cook County. We've got the meeting going, and we've got you on speakerphone, and Matt is just giving us a little introduction, okay?
Okay.
All right. So what I was saying was, I just didn't want to talk over James there. So we got in conversation with the DNR about this because the DNR owns the Irish Creek Pit up in, well, it's up off the Arrowhead Trail. And they mentioned it to us. We got really excited about it. Neva had known about this and was in conversation with Heather, who's on the phone right now. And so it all came to a head. We brought it to the Highway Advisory Committee. They were excited about it. So we wanted you guys to have a chance to hear about it. If everyone has a positive feeling about it, then it goes to a resolution that is passed by the County Board, in which we actually request that the aggregate mapping program commence in Cook County. That's my understanding. And what this would allow us to do is get an idea for where the gravel is in the county. And I wanted to also mention that this really does, my understanding of this is it would stop at the Grand Portage Line. They are not necessarily interested in this. Robbie's had a conversation with Bobby and the Tribal Council about it. So just wanted to make that clear, too, that our intent is not to impose this on them by any means. It's up to them.
And I'd just like to say, Robbie said at the Highway Advisory, it's not doing the B of B C A either.
Right. Yeah.
Wait, what? It would not be included in the mapping?
Right.
I don't know what all is involved in the mapping. But that's an interesting point, because of our discussions about the goals, right? And the value and how it is.
But he said, since we will not be digging the gravel up there, there was no sense.
Is gravel a mineral?
It's a, it's a...
Aggregate resource.
Thank you.
So, but I'm sure Heather can speak more to that. And I don't know if Neva wants to add something before we turn it over to Heather.
Sure. I'll just add quickly that this has some helpfulness when it comes to land use and zoning. It's helpful for property owners to be able to look at the area that they're really looking to purchase. In Cook County, we have our zoning ordinance set up so that a gravel pit could be considered in any zoning district. So it's not specifically that a certain zone district would prohibit aggregate resource activities, like they might in a different county. But it is helpful for a property owner, if they're looking to buy and they say, "I want to buy someplace that I never have to worry about an aggregate pit going in," they could look at this map in the future and say, like, "Hey, there's no aggregate resources in this area." That's one surety, I would know about that area. Or if they are buying land right next to an area that there may be good aggregate resources, they might have that transparency in purchasing property. And it could be reasonable to say in the future in our zoning ordinance or our land use guide plan that, hey, reference this document, and properties that are being found within these high-value areas, they're going to be prioritized for aggregate resources. Because the fact of the matter is, is that these resources are not renewable. They are where they are. And so in order for us to have sustainable, affordable development in the county, we have to be able to access them in a good way. So, but that's all I have from my zoning implications. But yes, I've spoken with Heather in the past on this, and I'll let her explain the program and go from there.
Go ahead, Heather.
All right, thanks. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
All right. Well, thanks, Neva. Thanks, Matt. That was a great tee-off. If you want to start the presentation, that would be great.
All right, we're working on that right now. We'll let you know when we have it up.
Sure. And I think what I'll do, too, is I won't spend too much time on this. Feel free to ask questions in the middle of any slide. And I will try to, yeah, I'll try to leave, well, I want to leave plenty of room for other additional conversations.
Great, thank you. We're still working on getting it pulled up.
No worries.
Just give us a minute.
While we wait, are there any, I will ask or answer the question, if gravel is a mineral. It belongs to the surface estate, so it's not technically considered a part of the mineral estate. So whoever owns the surface of land is the fee owner of the gravel.
Is peat in the mineral estate?
No, peat is not in the mineral, that also goes with the surface estate.
Okay.
Dimension stone, it's, dimension stone is one of those iffy ones. The state manages it as part of the mineral estate, according to law, but typically that is part of the surface estate and regulated as a non-metallic mineral, which is the purview of counties.
Wait, what was that one?
So the state, how it splits up jurisdiction between various mineral resources, is that the state is on private lands, the counties have jurisdiction of non-metallic reclamation. And reclamation in the state is considered life of mine. It's not just the end of mine. So in state statute, the forms of control for county government is non-metallic reclamation. And so then the state has purview for metallic resources, so ferrous and non-ferrous, and then for mine sites greater than 160 acres per peat.
Heather, how long has this tool been available in the state of Minnesota?
There is a statute directing the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources to do this work, and it's passed since 1984. So all throughout, like, the 80s and 90s, it took quite a while to create one map. And so the maps weren't really, you know, being done that fast. It took like about three years to do a single map. But then once GIS became a tool, we're able to have, you know, to be able to map an average-sized county between a year to a year and a half. And so it depends on our funding levels at that point. We had a funding hiatus from 2011 until 2018. After 2018, we were able to get LCCMAR funds, which have been, and we were able to complete four maps with the last in three years of that grant. And we're looking at completing parts of St. Louis County and then Yellow Medicine County with our second LCCMAR grant.
Great, thank you very much. Well, we do have the slides up now, just starting with the overview.
All right, let's get past the overview and head to the next slide.
We're there.
Okay. There's a little bit of a delay on the video feed, so I will just go off of my slides and then just say next. So when we talk about aggregate resources, we're talking about sand and gravel and crushed stones. But, you know, not all geologic resources are created equal. Some sandings and gravels are better quality, same with crushed stone. Not all bedrock resources can be able to be a source of aggregate. And so, and as Neva said, that, you know, these are non-renewable resources, and in terms of sand and gravel, it will take another glaciation to replenish them. Next slide. So construction aggregates are essential. You are aware, you know, we use them for roads, private construction, recreational infrastructure, public works. And so, you know, basically, on a statewide scale, it's about 50% private, 50% public in terms of who uses aggregate. In areas that are rural, where there's not a lot of, you know, private development, it goes up to 80% public. And so that means 80% of the area that's being used is for publicly or taxpayer-paid projects. Next slide. So this is a map that you're seeing, and it just shows that Minnesota is a mining state and that a third of the United States' mineral production is actually sand and gravel and for non-fuel minerals. Next slide. And then, like I said, you know, we use a lot. This is a non-renewable resources, there's not an ability to substitute for these resources, and we use them widespread, and every county has an aggregate pit. Next slide. This is an interesting graph, because I just want to point out a couple of things. So the blue line is production, and the green line is the total value. So when we were building our roads back in 1970, we were producing a lot of aggregates to build up our infrastructure, but the costs of these aggregates were really low. And what you'll see in the trend, even though the cost of, you know, the use of aggregates went down, the value of aggregates continued to go up until the 2000s, where they kind of mirror one another. Really, the takeaway point from this is that it costs more to build roads because aggregates are just not as widely available as they were 50 years ago. Next slide. I like this slide because a lot of times people think of aggregate and aggregate issues as being just an urban issue, that that's where, you know, the greatest demands are, and so really, we should focus those efforts in, you know, our regional economic centers. And if you look at places like your county and St. Louis, really, the largest network of roads we have are rural roads and our gravel roads. And so, you know, 80 to 90% of a township budget goes towards maintaining these rural roads, and same with counties. And so the county-level infrastructure, I would advocate, is just as important, whether you're in a rural landscape or an urban landscape. And all of these costs, in terms of how it may impact a county, it really depends on how far away you need to transport your aggregate. Like, the cost of aggregate is the same everywhere, you know, for pit run, but once you put it into a truck, that's where things start to add up. So the further away an aggregate source is, the higher the cost is, and then also the higher the carbon footprint is for a project. And MinDOT, as well as other states like California, are really looking at lowering greenhouse emissions as it relates to construction. And so having sources as close to the project is what's really significant in being able to achieve some of these greenhouse reduction goals. Next slide. You know, all mineral resources, these are just not evenly distributed, and like I said, the quality isn't the same. Glaciers posited them in the past, the sand and gravel, and so, and they will, that's what we will need to do, you know, to replenish these deposits in the future. Next slide.
Well, can we stop here for a second?
Yep.
Can you speak to the significance of a glacial lake?
Yes. Oh, that's a really good point. So glacial lakes, and this is just one slide, but glacial lakes tend to be areas of scarcity. And so in northern Minnesota, like Koochin County, and also in western Minnesota, where we had large glacial lakes, they, it's just silt, mostly silt and non-granulated particles. And so glacial lakes can be a difficult area for finding aggregates.
Thank you.
Were you able to? Any further questions?
I think that's fine, thank you.
Okay. Next slide. So aggregate quality is really dependent upon what bedrock the glaciers overrode. And so this is kind of a, this is a great example of how the quality of aggregate is different in the different parts of the state, and the issues that come up because of the aggregate quality. The Department of Transportation actually put this slide together based off of their quality analysis across the entire state. And so in your neck of the woods, what we have are softer bedrock sources, which can impact how, so weathered rocks can impact how they perform in an aggregate mix. Those are one of the things that we look for when we do map aggregates. Next slide. So I'm speeding through this so we can have time to chit-chat afterwards. Again, please interrupt if any questions. This is what our aggregate maps look like. I am proud to say, as a geologist, that we don't produce geologic maps. We produce maps that are intended for everyone to be able to look at, understand, interpret, and read. We try to put as many of our data sources on the map, so there's transparency in our interpretations, that people look at these and feel, you know, a relative confidence that the blobs of high, moderate, low, and limited aggregate are based off of ground trooping and observations that we make in the field. We do county-scale maps, and so what that means is, we're not looking for aggregate, specific aggregate deposits. So like that line between government and private industry, you know, we will produce a county-wide scale map for people to make plans off of whether it's, you know, the county for rezoning, or a potential aggregate company to look at, or a private landowner to look at to see what's in their backyard. But, you know, this is still a regional reconnaissance scale map, it's not a site-specific map. So site-specific work will be needed to further define these resources, if to develop a mine. And so the purpose of these, and why this direction was given to the DNR, is that it was recognized even in the 70s that aggregate resources are being covered up, and they're also being sterilized with other land uses. And so that, to be able to make sound land use decisions, that it's just nice to know where these resources are. We incorporate events to be used in land use planning. And so really, ultimately, we would just want to ensure that future generations have access to this information as well. Next slide. The products that we produce are really data-rich, and so why they look really simple in map form, they're actually, the GIS data is pretty detailed. And so we'll do an aggregate potential map that anyone can request for free. We have an interactive mapper on our website, so if you want to look at the GIS data sources, which people who, you know, we're all familiar with Google Maps, I think we're all becoming GIS specialists, you know, through Google Maps, you know, people are able to go in and look at some of the specific data. And then we produce a gravel pit database, a field observation database, and then the final, the aggregate potential database. And all these databases have a lot of, like I said, background information in those databases. And so I mentioned land uses that, you know, may sterilize aggregate deposits. And so this is a case study that we did in Meeker County, where we just mapped the geologic availability of aggregates. When you start to overlay land use conflicts, such as, you know, permanent easements and conservation easements, you know, wetlands, setbacks from property lines or homes, you really see that even in a rural landscape, that half of the aggregates are reduced, the available aggregates are reduced due to that. You know, if you look at the far east side, there's an existing gravel pit that's completely surrounded by conservation easements, so there's basically, that sort of gravel is sterilized. And so I'm fully in support of conservation easements. It's not, it's just a tool to be able to plan to make sure that we're making the best decisions for all available resources using information. And so just quickly, how do we do it? We will do, look at what's been done, basically. And so with, you know, previous mapping, one of the biggest questions we get is, what's the difference between a superficial map, a soils map, and an aggregate map? The way I like to explain that is a soils map will go, you know, three meters down, so maybe, or two meters down, so six feet. A superficial map will just map the top layer of whatever superficial layer there is. And then an aggregate map, we look down to 50 feet. And so there are a lot of times, there may be glacial landforms that are covered by 10 feet of non-aggregate material or till covering aggregate that might not get picked up by a superficial map, where we're able to, you know, hone in based off of existing data and fieldwork. So we do a literature review, will inventory, do a remote survey of inventory of gravel pits, tile, existing GIS data, we'll do landform mapping, fieldwork, kind of actually thrown throughout all of these processes, and then we'll finalize the map and database. Next slide. So the gravel pit inventory is actually one of the most helpful, I think, pieces of information that we do give counties, because we will go through and collect any MinDOT data, any MinDOT quality data, and we'll take a historical look. It's not just what gravel pits are open today, it's what gravel pits we can see through historical air photos from almost, you know, 80 years ago, if they're available. And we'll also note the status of these pits. So if they're completely reclaimed through a passive or natural vegetation, we'll note that. But what's really helpful are those gravel pits that seem like they're inactive, that are like partially overgrown, but partially not overgrown. So you'll get a full inventory of maybe some of those gravel pits that have, you know, what we call legacy gravel pits. Maybe they're abandoned, but may have legacy issues. And those are the ones that actually, you know, in terms of good neighbor policies, and they tend to attract dumping and other issues, so it's good to have an idea of where those are located. I'm going to skip down to, you know, two more slides where you see arm, it says arm pit methodology, and you see kind of a glacier. And this is where, you know, we, having, taking a look in terms of glacial systems helps us provide or develop predictive models of how, like, gravel is distributed. So what that basically means is, the closer you are to ice, that is where you have the velocity for, you know, for coarse deposition, so you, and then the further away you go from glacial ice, you know, the sand and gravel tends to be more well-sorted, and tends to consist of more sand. And so by looking at the detailed glacial history of an area, you can start to develop, you know, like I said, these predictive models of where there's coarse materials, where there might be fine materials, and then do a potential map based off of quality, and then overburden, and then just the coarseness of a deposit. Next slide, and this one should be highlighting landform mapping. And so, like I said, we'll look at these landforms, we'll have this predictive model of what the landform, what the sediment association is to these landforms. Here you can see what a real-life braided channel system looks like coming off of glacial meltwater. And then in the DEM next to it, you can kind of see the same braided system coming off of a glacial meltwater system. And so we're able to, you know, map these landforms, and this is an easy example. There's a little bit more complex example, but this is a good one to talk about, because you can see these patterns both in DEM, but, you know, we'll look at air photos, we'll look at, you know, digital elevation models, and to try to identify landforms that are aggregate-producing. Next slide. This one is highlights on fieldwork. So we do go out in the field, this isn't just a remote survey, I've talked to other states, and what they'll do is they'll directly derive aggregate potentials from existing maps. We don't do that. We will certainly use that information, but we'll go out and do ground trooping, and whether it's looking at construction, whether we're digging a hole on the, you know, from a, that's an animal hole that you're seeing with the shovel, we'll drill, you know, Chad and Nick have gone out and augured, we'll look at the old gravel pits as well as new gravel pits. Next slide. And then we'll finalize, you know, draw the lines, we'll put in the association of, you know, these landform sediments to drive the potential, and then finalize the data set. And so the next slide. We are, we are in a time where we're getting a lot of requests, which is great. We used to have this philosophy that we're not going to take requests until we can map. The reason why we're taking requests is that it's showing legislators that there's a demand for this resource, and that there's demand for this information. And so we've switched that philosophy that we're adding on to our waitlist. We're currently working through a backlog, and I will be honest, like, the backlog is a little bit, it's big. And so St. Louis did their county resolution back in 2001, and we have one more county that has that long of a waitlist, and now we are working on the 2010s after that, after St. Louis County and Yellow Medicine is done. But we have been, like I said, actively working with McPISA, the Minnesota Association of Counties, with other stakeholders like the Aggregate Ready Mix Association, to try to accelerate this program so we can map the whole state in 10 years, and that is our goal. So depending on funding, our program is scalable, and right now we have two full-time geologists working, and, you know, we'll be able to crank out St. Louis County as well as Yellow Medicine, and, you know, Yellow Medicine will only take a year. St. Louis County, since it's the size of a small state, will take a little bit longer. But, and so, you know, like I said, our goal is to try to do the state in 10 years.
Do you think you can, I mean, it seems pretty likely that we'll have it done before the next glacial period, right?
That is my, you know, I'm hoping to get it done before I retire. No, I am confident. It's interesting, because, you know, we're trying to build support, and we've had really great support through, like I said, McPISA and the Minnesota Association of Counties. And so I think we're getting there. We've been... We've been able, like I said, to get funding through LCCMR. It hasn't been the traditional way, though, that's my only concern, is that when we, when we do do an LCCMR project through a traditional application, we haven't gotten the votes. There's this fear that aggregate mapping needs aggregate mining, and that's been a tough misconception to overcome. And so that hasn't been the case. You know, in, in one of our biggest successes in overcoming that is actually one of our DNR offices in southwestern Minnesota where they were really reluctant to have, you know, their fellow DNR folks map aggregates. And now they've seen the benefits with land use and now actually with conservation so that they can point to other aggregate deposits if something is being conserved for other resource issues. They could say, hey, there's something down the road here, we're not sterilizing the, you know, the only aggregate available. And so they've become our biggest advocate. And so you can see that there's a lot of counties down in southwestern Minnesota, and that's primarily because of the advocacy down in Region 3 of our, of the DNR. So I would say that, you know, this, like I said, that the mapping is, is good for land use planning, it's good for conservation planning, it's good for kind of mitigate and talk about competing resources. And so, final slide is that, you know, there are legacy pit issues. One of the things to think about, you know, is that we didn't have mining regulations until the 70s and for, you know, coal mining, and, and then we didn't have mining regulations for non-fairish mining until the 80s. And so that kind of trickled down to, I think, local governments where they started incorporating reclamation into ordinances maybe in the 90s and in 2000s. And so as a result, there are legacy pits out there. But with good planning and, and appropriate, you know, reclamation ordinances, you can really do amazing things with, with reclamation of a gravel pit. One of the things that Blue Earth County identified is that they are looking to reclaim their gravel pits for creating species, specific species habitat, and this is a loggerhead shrike, they're endangered, their bills are too weak to be able to eat, so they have to impale their food on spikes. And so they're trying to use gravel pits as a way to plant spiky vegetation to help promote, you know, the, help promote the population of these birds. So it's really interesting to, to work with counties and how they've implemented this information. I know that La Sure, they put, they created a mining district where they put on people's deeds that this is a mining district and to expect gravel mining in this area. And as, as was talked about earlier, it's a great communication tool so that when people are looking to, you know, build their retirement home and have, you know, want peace and quiet, that they're not building it next to a future gravel pit. And so it's been used in St. Louis, or sorry, Sterns County to help mitigate some of the permitting controversies that can, because ideally you want, you know, your gravel pits close to your population sources or where it's being used. And so, but that's where the greatest conflict is. So they've had a really good success in being able to explain why gravel pits need to be where they are, and then start, you know, mitigating the issues that, that people are concerned about. And so I talked fast, and I am open to questions if you have any, any questions.
Commissioners, any questions?
How soon do we need to act?
Oh, how soon do we need to act?
Um, I would, you know, the way we're operating, it's, it's first come, first served, so whoever's on our waitlist first is who we're mapping. And so that's where I'll leave. I don't want to make it seem like you have to act tomorrow to then wait for a few years, you know, that, that, but whatever works for you guys.
All right, well, thank you, Heather. We know when, we have some upcoming meetings, and we'll be looking to guidance from both planning and zoning and from the Highway Department on that.
Yeah.
Commissioner White.
What is the cost of this? Is there a cost?
Yeah, we have, it's been, it's been varied throughout our mapping. So when we have LCCMR funding, it's been at no cost to the county. There have been certain counties where we asked for, like, reimbursement of our travel costs, and that's been between, you know, $7,000 to $10,000. So it's, it's a low cost.
What is the average total cost without LCCMR?
Um, to the county or to us? To do the project?
Combined, combined.
Combined, okay. So to do the project, it is between 100, you know, it's between 75 to 125,000 dollars. It all depends on size. It also depends on how far away it is from, you know, where we are based, which is in St. Paul. But the average cost to the county has probably, you know, most counties have gotten, gotten it for free. There have been some counties who are willing to reimburse, you know, $5,000 to $10,000 of travel costs, and so that's the cost generally to the county. We've been working with St. Louis County to do some in-kind services, like processing the aggregate for quality, you know, through the, you guys, I'm sorry, the Transportation Department. We've been, we've been able to, you know, ask if they'd be willing to do our gradations, and so that can cut down costs, too. And St. Louis is looking at maybe getting, getting IRR funds, requesting that to help fund the drilling and equipment rental because it's kind of rocky in some places and are getting, so there are opportunities to reduce that cost. But it's really, you know, we don't want it to be cost prohibitive for counties to sign up. We want, we want every county to be, you know, to be able to sign up. So it's, it's a nominal fee.
Thank you, Heather. Another question, Commissioner Mills.
Yeah, and so, so with those 20 counties pending or requesting or whatever, is the, what's the bottleneck? Is it staffing or LCCMR funding, state funding?
It's state, it's state funding.
Yeah, so is there an opportunity for counties, if it's a priority, to pony up and move up the list?
Yes. I would say that, yes, to be able to keep the mapping going and to be able to keep the staff going and the program going, we'd, we'd entertain that. And not, and just because if, if, if LCCMR funds dry out, you know, training someone to be an aggregate mapper is, it's really a niche, and it, it doesn't happen, it takes, you know, a highly supervised process for the first year, and then they're set. But it takes about a year, and so we want to be able to have continuity. And so if, we've shut, we've shuttered once because of lack of funding, and I, I would hate to, you know, shutter again because I don't know, it takes a lot to be able to reopen.
Commissioner White.
What does LCCMR mean?
Oh, yeah. So LCCMR is the Legislative Citizen Commission for Minnesota Resources. And so it, it comes off of our Lotto Fund, and, and so a lot of, you know, some of the conservation work, stream rehabilitation, recreational infrastructure has been, has been paid through LCCMR grants. And so it's very difficult for us to get LCCMR grants unless a legislator just writes it in. And so that's happened twice now, where a legislator, legislator has said, we want this, and we're going to fund this through, and, but that means someone who's gone through the application process, who has been approved, get their money taken away. So ideally, this is not the way we want to go because that means someone else loses because we got written in.
Other questions? Commissioner Hawkins.
I'm curious about Lake County and when they requested, and if there's any advantage to working together as two counties, since we haven't requested yet to say we'll work with Lake County to make this happen.
I would say yes. It certainly is, I think, advantageous to map for us regionally as well, instead of, you know, bopping between different regions. St. Louis will be a really great case study for larger regions for us to see what efficiencies we'll gain through mapping a big area. And so in that, there was a legislative commission in 2018 to look at this and, and to, to look at, you know, and that was brought up, is, is there a more efficient way to do it? And mapping regionally was one of them. And so I would say yes, if, if Lake County and, sorry, Cook County want to join forces and say, hey, we'll just do the Arrowhead region, I think that would be really a great project.
That's a really, you know, helpful concept and something we would really consider. Commissioner Mills.
Is there any precedent for not having the LCCMR funding, counties ponying up and then getting reimbursed when there is LCCMR funding?
Um, that is a good question. I, I haven't heard of any precedent in terms of, of a reimbursement. But I know that there is strict control on how LCCR funding is divvied up, and so, yeah, I guess I can answer that question. My gut feeling, though, is to say that's just the way state is, like with funding years, that reimbursement is really hard, that once you have a fiscal year, things are shut down after that fiscal year. But that's a good question. The only, the one other thing is that this issue is being looked at nationally through the United States Geological Survey, so the USGS. Because of the bipartisan infrastructure law that got, you know, passed a few years ago, there's a big push to, to, you know, redo our roads because they're, you know, the average road, I'm sure you're aware of the civil engineering report, you know, in Minnesota is like a C or a D that we're just, our infrastructure is aging. But they haven't addressed where those materials are going to come from. So these projects have been funded, but there hasn't been, they haven't looked at the supply chain. And so there's a RACS Act nationally, and they're meeting to discuss it on a national level of how we can get states funded for aggregate mapping. And Minnesota is used as a model because we've been doing it for so long.
All right, well, thank you. Any other questions before we conclude? Well, Heather, we want to thank you so much for the information, and if we have additional questions, we know where to find you.
Yeah, and I will just add one more because I heard you talking about the tribal, tribal boundaries. And we've mapped in other areas where we've, Fond du Lac, for example, they asked us to map their entire tribal boundary. So we were mapping Carlton, they're like, can you finish our tribal, you know, boundary? So we mapped a little bit into St. Louis County. Then there have been the Lower Sioux Agency, they didn't want their tribal boundaries mapped, so we didn't. And so we will, you know, we will work with the tribes, and if, if Grand Portage doesn't want to be mapped, we certainly would not map them nor go into their tribal boundaries to do any mapping, so.
Great, well, thanks for clarifying that, and thank you very much for your time this morning, we appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. And thanks for your flexibility, I'm calling in.
Absolutely. Thanks again, bye-bye.
Have a good day.
Yeah, that was a great presentation. Thanks for bringing it forward. Lots of food for thought.
Looking forward to it. That's a great idea.
So our next item is our Coordinated Mental Health Crisis Response. Get on the list.
Right, right.
So, are we set, John? All right, well, we're moving on now to Item C, our Coordinated Mental Health Crisis Response update. And we have a team of prisoners from Public Health and Human Services today, Matt Vaxley, John Speaker, and Allison McIntyre, our director. And we'll turn it over to you, Allison, to start us off.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Sullivan, and members of the board. I'm going to start with a brief overview of the timeline of this project, and then invite Matthew and John to help provide more detail about their work over the last six months as they have come on board. So you might remember in December of 2021, the Public Health and Human Services Board appropriated funding towards the Coordinated Crisis Response Pilot. Our original vision for this model is that we would work with the Human Development Center as they are providing mobile crisis response services currently after hours and on the weekends. We ran into some barriers along the way with HDC and some of their rigid structures in terms of wages. At that point, we modified our proposal to hire a person within our county system to help lead and coordinate this work going forward. Prior to that, our work in coordinating services across systems began back in 2018 with the formation of a local multidisciplinary crisis response team that includes membership from our staff, Cook County Sheriff's Office, North Shore Health, local schools, Violence Prevention Center, Grand Portage Human Services, and others. So after determining that HDC's wage structure would be a barrier to being able to fill this position locally, we went through the process of developing a job description and going through the, the county processes for developing a position description, having that scored, bringing it to personnel. In addition to the original ARPA allocation, we also received crisis grant dollars through the Regional Arrowhead Behavioral Health Initiative. That was the question from Commissioner Hawkins at this morning's meeting, that discrepancy in grant revenues because we were able to secure additional grant dollars towards this pilot. We originally posted the position in April, that offer was accepted in September, so even with the higher wage that we were able to offer as a county position, it did take some time to fill that position. We were thrilled to welcome Matthew Vaxley into that role in early October. Matthew's initial onboarding and training work involved a series of trainings in crisis intervention and a co-response training in February with John as he was coming on board in January in his new role as our Behavioral Health Supervisor. Sheriff Eliason was also a part of that training as well. Before I hand it off to Matthew to go- Before I hand it off to Matthew to go a little deeper on some of our shared work over the last six months, I do want to mention as well another barrier that we encountered along the way with Human Development Center as it relates to their ability to provide clinical supervision and additional technical assistance and support to this project is that we found in January of this year that we would not be able to use their electronic medical record, case management document system. So that has been another effort that we've been undertaking is to determine how we modify our current social services documentation system to meet those needs or explore other options.
Can you say that one more time? Because I don't know what you're talking about.
Sure, absolutely.
I'm writing it down, thank you.
Sorry. So one of the premises that we were working under as we initially proposed this pilot is HDC is doing this work in the evenings and after hours. Anything that we can do to build on to the structures and systems that they already have in place will be to our benefit because it's less for us to recreate. HDC, however, has rigid wage structures and we're, we're not initially open to us using their electronic health record or having our staff access that electronic health record to document crisis encounters. And Matthew will share a bit more as we get into some detail about some of the limitations with data tracking as this is a, multiple systems are involved in this work, including law enforcement, dispatch, emergency health services, and human services staff both at the county and the tribe. So many people are involved in this patchwork of work. This has been our effort over the last six months is to find more cohesion and collaboration in that space, but it is as much of a work dependent on technology systems that aren't always designed towards that end.
Thank you.
And Matthew? Pick it up from there.
Yeah, thank you. That was a helpful overview. So I'll kind of follow a timeline to try to give this update and try to distill down a lot of complex information to something really simple, so there are a lot of, there's a lot of this taken me six months to understand, so I understand it may be hard to grasp in a, in a simple update. But, so I got hired in October and, you know, even in the initial interview, it was really communicated to me that would be a really self, a self-driven, self-starting position given that there is no coordinated crisis response in our county. And so was originally hired with the premise that HDC, the Human Development Center, who's based out of Duluth, would be providing a lot of the supervision and framework for that position, and that was part of the original memorandum of understanding that guided the process. However, once it came time to really start to engage with them and seek support in their, in their supervision, they just sort of demonstrated that they didn't have the capacity to provide it, and they didn't have the capacity to provide it in a timely way and in a way that we needed. So, but that took about three months to really nail down that they were saying they wanted to provide it, but they just weren't able to provide it. So in those first three months would have been, well, when I started in October till the end of December was, it seemed clear that the best way to start to understand the nature of the crisis response was through an after-action review process. So we, what seemed like would be a simple task, select a crisis situation that happened shortly after I began, and, and then interview all the participating individuals and agencies, became sort of like an opening a can of worms process. So to give you an idea of how that looked, that really was me coordinating with THS staff, law enforcement, dispatch, so deputies at law enforcement, dispatchers at law enforcement, HDC staff, emergency room, nurses and doctors, and then there's some other entities that I'd like to convoluted if I tried to explain, and just setting up this initial interview to figure out what happened in this specific situation that we were debriefing, but those ended up being any two- to three-hour-long conversations about not just this incident, but the way that each one of these agencies has been experiencing an overwhelming, having overwhelming experiences to mental health crises that have been happening for years, and specifically pointing to how that's building, the frequency of, of those occurrences, but also the sort of inconsistency and uncertainty around how they're supposed to be responded to, and everybody having really pretty drastically different expectations for how the process should go and what they can expect from their agency or their staff and what they can expect from others. So it became, and that, and, and that occurred actually over the period of, I think that started in late October, early November, and I think the last round of interviews was completed in early December. So that's how long it just took to coordinate that process. But what we learned from that is that there is no coordinated response to speak of, there has not been a coordinated response to speak of. So the work sort of, and with, when HDC sort of kind of fell out of the process, there was a little bit of our own crisis of how are we going to even just figure out how to move forward? And in, in that process, it became clear that we had to figure it, we had to make up our own system. And in regards to my work to try to attempt to look to other counties in Minnesota that we can build some sort of framework from, those counties also have no system. So if, if we complete this process, we will be one of the first rural communities to actually have developed the coordinated response that we're trying to build and kind of pioneering in that way. So from start to finish, it has looked like, it has been a process figuring out how does, how do, how do we engage with folks over in crisis response, and how do we create a protocol so that when they have a crisis response, they know who to call? Even if they call the wrong person, they know how to direct them, and we move them through the system of interacting with our local dispatchers, law enforcement, crisis responders, all the way through to the ER in the most extreme situations, and to a stabilization period. And we're built, that's been a process of building from scratch that involves each one of those agencies. So it involves extreme input from ER staff, credible input from deputies, dispatch, so on and so forth. So we're in the middle of that right now, and I can provide lots of examples for how that's going, but that's sort of an overview of, of what's been happening over the last six months. Did I hit it all?
Could you go into a bit more detail on some of the trainings that you've conducted with staff internally and across other local response systems?
Sure.
I will also add that you talk about the co-response training we went to and what that meant in terms of state or out there.
Yeah, a pretty pivotal experience after, so HDC fell out of the picture, was attending a co-response training, so it's law enforcement and social services, with John and Pat down in Stillwater. That was a pretty intense immersion into how other larger urban communities are building co-responses. And there were representatives there from other rural communities, other urban communities, but I think the takeaway of, from that was that we needed a more, we needed a much more detailed roadmap for how to move forward. That doesn't exist because the other rural communities that were there also don't have one, but we were, I was able to, we were able to take the roadmap that they were using and then was able to, have been able to adapt that to Cook County. And so that's sort of a guiding map that came out of that experience. And I think that would also really help to solidify some of the expectations for what law enforcement needs from crisis response and what social services needs or the crisis response needs from law enforcement. And so I think since then, it's been moved, you know, I've had, had to put together some really specific trainings in order to, and protocols in order to have them implemented. So just recently, it was a training with dispatch, helping them know how to direct those crisis calls when they come through so as to alleviate the, the burden of dispatch and deputies by utilizing our regional crisis line. This may be a good time to talk a little bit about stats. So I think there was a request for some of the, some stats on crisis calls, and this is sort of a great picture into what we've been dealing with. So I finally just recently got some numbers from dispatch. So including 2022 to present, they've had approximately 330 mental health crisis-related calls in that timeframe, so maybe one every three days or so. The regional crisis line, which receives funding to receive the mental health crisis calls from Cook County, has got, their stats are, it's been utilized about once a month. So there's a huge disparity between how many, the crises that are coming in to dispatch and the resource that's been designed to field those. So the training was with dispatch on how to utilize the regional crisis line, how to do warm handoffs to their, to basically their mental health dispatchers, and how to also call out local crisis resources, all in the aim of creating clear expectations for what we expect to happen to alleviate load on dispatch and law enforcement until they're actually needed.
Can I ask for clarification on that?
Absolutely, please.
So 2022 to present, you're checking the whole year?
Sorry, 2020 to present.
Oh, so the 300 mental health cases are from 2020 to present?
Yes.
And when did the regional health crisis line get put into effect?
That has been recent change. Do you want to speak for that, Matthew?
I don't know when it was actually established as far as the crisis line for Cook County. Do you know?
For many, many years.
I'm thinking it's ten-plus years that emergency response system was implemented across the state by regions.
So it's existed for a very long time, almost completely unutilized.
Because it wasn't advertised, and nobody knew it was there.
Not only was it not advertised, but there were no protocols guiding how to use them for law enforcement, for dispatch. So for example, the crisis line has a dispatcher-specific line that dispatch can use to directly transfer calls. Nobody knew that existed until end of December when I went and met with the regional crisis resource.
That's really, I don't know, something.
Yeah.
I'm alone and thinking, I have no one.
You didn't know and I didn't know, Stacy.
And it sounds like we all, see, dispatchers didn't know. So there's communication issues with state. I just want to clarify, so 2020 to present, 330 mental health calls. I'm curious, how many mental health calls since we said we want a crisis response?
Great question. So I got those numbers from dispatch last, no, early this, last week. So I haven't gotten to go through all of them to figure out how many of those started since I started, but this gets into this very question that that is an important thing for us to know, and we don't have a procedure for documenting that, primarily because they can come from various sources and go to various entities. And, and so the, the attempt at the solution right now is to try to run all of those through that regional line so that we have a central, a central agency that's taking all of them, and then we have a central place to then build our numbers from. Does that make sense?
Can't you just have a tally sheet?
Wouldn't that be great?
I don't know.
No, you can't, because dispatch gets a wide funnel of calls, and some of those are going to be mental health crisis, some of them are going to be health crisis, others are going to be violence, they're also going to just be, you know, kind of random calls. I ran out of gas up for Highway 61 in January, you know? So you have to sort all of that as to what kind of call is it, and then what is the response going to be? And that's been a bit of the chaos because I think Cook County is a good county of problem solving, so we do what we got to do to take care of whatever happens at the moment. But that means we don't have an organized system. We have a, we have an individual response system to any time we have an occurrence. And so this is an attempt for us to kind of organize that in a way where we can kind of create efficiency and also maybe build capacity because we can get those resources that are organized to respond to the appropriate need when it occurs. And that helps dispatch enormously because they're not the triage entity that has to sort out, what do we do with any call that comes in? They know, oh, we got the call, we can now send over to this group, and they can deal with that. We get this call, we can send it over to that group. And so we're, this is an attempt to get the crisis calls and the mental health calls to the appropriate people that are trained in that space to keep then those callers safe.
And I would add as well that dispatch isn't the only point of contact for someone experiencing mental health crisis. They might present with the emergency department, they might contact Cook County Human Services directly, they might contact Grand Portage Human Services directly. So again, this partnership is an effort to better understand that need, better share information across systems, and coordinate here at those transitions as well.
So we're encouraging to call this crisis line. Do you have law enforcement use the crisis line if somebody calls there, call the crisis line? Day and night?
Well, so let me, let me provide a little more clarity around that process. So somebody's experienced, we have a flow chart that's actually quite complicated how it's supposed to work. So if somebody's experienced a mental health crisis, they can either call 911 if they feel it's an emergency, and they may, if they don't feel it's an emergency, they could actually call the regional crisis line themselves, or they could go to the ER. Those are a few of their options. And if it goes to dispatch and it's an emergency, so somebody's life is at risk, whether theirs or of another person's, they're going to send a deputy. They're also going to contact the regional crisis line, which is in charge of dispatching our local mobile crisis support.
So they contact the worst?
Well, so during the day, it's Public Health and Human Services. After hours, weekends, and holidays, it's one of two on-call crisis responders that are employed by HDC out of Duluth. They're local, but their employment is through HDC in Duluth, and that's who is contracted to staff those hours.
Or they're contacting Human Services up on Grand Portage because they are their own crisis, mobile crisis response.
Yeah, so there's a separate, there's two separate agencies in place.
So if somebody calls in night, that person responds physically?
Okay, so this gets, this gets into this whole other component of working with HDC, which is a number, another member of this coordinated response. They, the local staff who I have done interviews and trainings with now have not gotten a lot of guidance from HDC directly on their responsibilities and expectations. So when I came on, they weren't sure if they should respond in person, they had gotten outdated guidance at one point that they should never respond in person, that wasn't updated to meet the current expectations. So there was a lot of real lack of clarity. At this point, the expectation is that if they get a call out from law enforcement or directly from the regional crisis line, that their first goal is to try to resolve it over the phone. If that's not possible, then their second goal is to meet them at the emergency room to help with that assessment intervention stabilization process. If that's not, also not possible, then their job is to work with law enforcement to respond in person to a safe scene. So law enforcement's role in that process is to ensure safety and provide transport if needed, the crisis responders there to help with the assessment of their crisis. And the... and the necessary intervention. That's a lot of information that makes sense.
So law enforcement does do transport for mental health crises?
That is one of.
Not legal.
It is completely legal. Okay, so another member of this after extra review has been Molly from the county attorney's office and reviewing the statutes. There's a, it's a really complicated and tenuous element with law enforcement, because they are legally authorized to do temporary holds in the case that a person is in danger of harming themselves or others. The challenge with that is it's based on the deputy, responding deputy's discretion, you know? So they have to be able to assess and make a determination that this person is at risk. And, and then in the back of their minds, they're like, and then I'm going to have to support this if it comes in under question. So they've sort of taken this stance of, we just don't do that, in order to protect themselves, which is very understandable.
And not, and not just Cook County law enforcement. This is a statewide, national.
Yeah.
But there's a lot of, yeah, let me just finish, and then I'd be happy to. We're currently working with law enforcement because they don't feel comfortable, and we don't want them to make assessments that they don't feel capable of making, of assisting them in that assessment process, or co, not even assisting them, of doing it collaboratively, so that, that a mobile crisis responder can assist, can work together in conjunction with deputies to assess and then help with that, be another voice in that determination that yes, this person is at risk, it's okay to transport them to the ER. Not going to take them to jail, not going to take them to the emergency room.
And I guess maybe that was my expectation of this program, working among law enforcement to provide the skills that maybe some of our deputies don't have. I expected that to be part of this program, because that's how it's run in the larger cities. So I was just curious. Well, it's not working that way here.
So that is one of the big, important goals that is requiring lots of communication and collaboration with law enforcement, and the, the direction that needs to still be completed is, for that to be successful, is coming up with really concrete protocols and expectations between the crisis response and law enforcement on how that's going to go. Because it's not going to work just to start showing up at a scene without understanding what is the expectation of the deputy, what is the expectation of the crisis responder. We were hoping to get all of that guidance from HDC at the beginning of this program. When that didn't occur, we were left to try to piece that together ourselves. That is still in process.
And I think in all fairness to HDC, what became obvious at that co-response training that Matthew, I, and Sheriff Pat went to, is this is a new space that's really just getting developed in kind of current time. So other counties have been developing all of their own systems from scratch, and where there's now getting to be enough counties where they're, you're starting to be able to compare models as to what's going to be effective, what's not going to be effective. But one thing we heard from local law enforcement is, why isn't PHHS showing up at these calls? Because, excuse me, because there's a lot of you and there's less of us. Well, there are a lot of social workers at PHHS, but they're not training crisis responders, they're, they're case managers. And those are two very different distinct tasks and skill sets for, you know, the work they do. So there's a whole space of, who is that crisis response team, and do they know how to appropriately intervene in those various scenarios that's going to keep that person who is perhaps suicidal or in a mental health crisis, to keep them safe, and also to keep the people around them safe? And law enforcement brings one lens to that equation. The social work profession brings another lens to that equation. And that became very evident in that training that we were adding still on, is, and neither lens is wrong. It's, they're contributory towards the whole, but if there's only one party showing up and that, we limit then our capacities to really make those interventions appropriate and effective. So that is exactly the puzzle we're trying to tease out right now, of how do we do that locally? How do we, you know, let law enforcement do what they do well, and them have the confidence that the crisis response team is going to be present and available, and then we have to know who the crisis response team is, and we have to have them trained and built out so we can respond in kind of all different scenarios. This is not going to be a training that we just, this is going to be a learning experience that we're going to probably continue to evolve into and become proficient in over time, because we're going to have more and more circumstances that nobody's thought of before, and then we're going to have to think about how do we appropriately intervene in that particular scenario.
You're so, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
These are great questions.
Two different things. Do you have background in crisis response training?
Uh, yes, no. Formally, no. Practically, yes. I have, I worked with homeless adults who were always in crisis, and so in that world, in the Twin Cities, law enforcement was not a partner. They were often an adversary, and we couldn't get homeless adults into healthcare systems because, for a variety of reasons. And so we often, as homeless providers, were managing those crises by ourselves, just because we wanted to keep people safe, we wanted to try to get them into housing. It was a huge, we were working forever trying to get those systems to work in that metro area. And honestly, it didn't, it never has. So there is training available. I've taken some of that. I feel competent in that space, but I think it's a space that we need to be very intentional about in terms of our capacities here in Cook County. There are other people who are really good at, there's some intuitive, there are some people who are just intuitively good at it, but let's, if we formalize it, then we can train a broader scope of people, and then we have the best outcomes for that citizen.
And I think my next question is really related to that, then. Wondering how, so I'll be honest with you, and I thought we hired a crisis response worker, that meant you were out in the field doing this, not studying what happened four years ago.
Me too.
My fault, not understanding what that means. Crisis response worker, I think, is a crisis response worker, not studier. So that's just on me, I guess. So did you, in your six months with us, helping figure this mapping out, meet anybody in the field to say, yes, my plan works, or no, here's a flaw, that, that isn't going to work, because I, I have done this, I know that.
If I think I understand your correct, your answer, your question, have I actually done the job that I was hired to do? That's the question, right?
Or I get it, you were trying to develop, but yes, have you physically done?
No, I have not.
Okay.
That's, that's been one, that's been the biggest problem.
Okay.
And I, I'd like to give a few reasons why, if that's okay.
I'd love it. Thank you.
Yeah. I think the, the first reason was initially, you know, we, we need to have a protocol that's going to be guided by HDC before I start to respond to crises. But we never got that. And I've been very clear with all of the supervisors at PHHS that I'm not going to respond to a potentially dangerous mental health crisis without a protocol in place. That is, from a safety and liability perspective, is incredibly irresponsible. So the work became, what's our protocol? Who's going to supervise it? Who's going to guide that? And that has, is still a work in progress, and, which is part of the circumstances around my resignation, and the desire to have a more accurate framework for the work that really needs to happen, for this to be a safe and successful response, so that when somebody is responding, we are not reinforcing sort of the chaos of the past, and we're reinforcing a, a system and the response that's actually coordinated.
That helps me, I'm still going around up here, so.
Me too Stacy.
But thank you, that does give me a better perspective of.
But the, the needle has, the needle has moved, I'll just follow up on this.
Significantly.
The needle has moved, and some, a lot of the work that Matthew's done has been talking to Dispatch and getting protocols in place, and having them be knowing where they're routing calls. One of the problems was, they were, when they would get a call, and they would know that this might be, if this was a crisis with somebody personally, they would call Public Health and Human Services after hours line to solve this problem. And so our social workers were rotating call bases, taking these calls without any consistency or training. And so we were getting, you know, it was always random, because that's the system that was put in place about six months ago as well. Prior to that, law enforcement was calling two supervisors, if I understand it, Martino or Grace, and they were taking those calls 24/7 for when someone was in crisis, and they were having to make a decision. So Grace and Martina need to get some of those calls, because they're responsible for adult protection reporting cases or child protection reporting cases. But child and adult protection are not necessarily a mental health crisis call. So you suddenly, you know, we're going, you wear staff out, and you wear systems out by not having, you know, this kind of organization. So Matthew's work has allowed us to kind of get some of this clarity done. He's met with Dispatch, he's met with the emergency room. I happened to be on call this last week. So I got a call Friday night. I got a call during the day on Friday as the mobile crisis responder. Per the Dispatch sent the call to the crisis line, the crisis line contacted me. By that time, law enforcement and the ambulance were already en route to where, to that location. I did not go out, because I called, I talked to the partner of the person at risk, and by that time, there was, I did not feel the need for me to go out there, because I wasn't going to add anything more to the site. I followed up with the partner to, if that person was going to go to the emergency department and convey some of the information about what's been happening in that household, that person did not feel able to do that, because there were some children that they had to be taken care of. So I called the emergency department several hours later to check in on it. At that point, it was after five o'clock. I was technically off the clock from the crisis response system. HDC should have picked up then, but I happened to be the after-hours on-call person for PHHS. And this was likely going to be something that's going to fall into my domain. So I said, yep, you can call me all weekend long. And they did. They called me at 11:30 PM, because that's when they were getting their psychiatric evaluation done by a telehealth system at the emergency room. And this person was very ill, but was not interested in treatment. And so I consulted with that emergency room doctor around what the options were, and ultimately, that individual checked out, checked themselves out. Twenty minutes before I came down here, I was talking to that person to get on the phone, not the person who was in need, but the partner, and we're still looking to plan as to what are next steps, and how are we going to continue to do this? Now, technically, so it's appropriate for me to do this right now, it could also fall into crisis, where, well, it's during day hours, it would be PHHS, but this could fall under the crisis response system as well, but that's where this is just kind of vague and gray, and lines aren't always black and white, right? Human beings are messy, we're sloppy, so things cross over all the time. So, but I want to just, I think that was an example of the work that Matthew's done has brought us to that point now. The Dispatch is going to crisis line, the crisis line is contacting the mobile response team, the mobile response team is talking to the emergency department. The emergency department has a sense of how this, how their role fits into the care of these people, and so we get some better continuity of care around that family until the, and, you know, and in this case, it's not resolved yet. It's going to probably unfold for a while.
I really appreciate you sharing that perspective of a real life, because that helps me jump through the, the steps.
Yep.
So thank you for giving it.
Absolutely.
And I think the bigger picture that John's illustrating is that there has been lots of crisis responses, and there has been lots of crisis responses after hours during the day that I've been really closely a part of. I just haven't gone to somebody's house or gone to, you know, an emergency situation, but I've been aiding in that assessment and intervention process in the way that John just described, and in triaging those with John and other members of the staff. So the responses are happening, they're just still not happening in the, I, the way we really want them to yet. We're still moving in that direction.
And we're all kind of learning how to ride a bike a little bit, so we're wobbling. So we're doing a lot of consultation with each other to see if we're, you know, getting it done right.
You've been so patient.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, there's an issue. What do you do with minors? Because you cannot, you cannot take a minor to, to the clinic if you are not their parent, their guardian, and advocate for them. Law enforcement can't just be, nor can the school just drop some student who's having an issue off at the clinic. So what do they do? When, who do they call? If they call social services and no one picks up, and I'm talking about during, during the work day, because everyone's busy doing other things, what's supposed to happen?
So.
What do you do? What, what, there's a flaw in, because unless you have a designated advocate to take a minor to the clinic for, you know, because the person's in crisis, what do you do? What does law enforcement do with this minor? Drive around with them until the parent gets home from work, or what? I mean, rhetorical question, I don't expect that you have the answer.
I have lots of answers.
Okay.
Lots of possible answers, right? Because I think it's a really good question. And so if there's a minor, we had a situation just a couple of weeks back, it goes into our ideal, but the, the minor was safe and no laws were broken. They reached out for help through the resources that we've been putting out, which is the 988 number, suicide prevention number, they reached out online on their school device. And 988 was able to contact our local dispatch, that's a deputy.
988 is the national?
It's the national number, but it's staffed by the same regional line.
Okay.
So it's the same entity we've been discussing.
Okay, it's the same thing, okay.
Yep. Also, took a while to figure out.
Sort that out.
Yep. So Dispatch was contacted, a deputy arrived on scene. There was, it wasn't just the deputy, there was other school staffs that were involved with this youth. The parent was able to come, and the student was able to go to the ER, have a complete assessment, and get the care that they needed. So there are, there are many options if an individual is in danger of harming themselves. And law enforcement transport is a legal option in that scenario for a short-term transport hold. A parent is also an option to take them. A staff member can walk them to the ER. You know, when we're talking about the location of the school and the location of our emergency room or our courthouse, that's been an option that's been used many times. So.
An ambulance is also an option.
Ambulance is the least desirable, most costly option for an individual and a family, but possibly an option.
From a cost perspective, absolutely. From a health perspective, not necessarily the least favorable option. So it really depends on which lens you want to consider. But it is clearly a barrier for many of our families to incur that expense of an ambulance charge.
And then I have, I mean, I was just up in Grand Portage, connecting with agencies up there. The way that Grand Portage Human Services deals with a mental health, any, with a crisis, with their, within their community, they've got two people on call, and they leave, and they work during the day, they have four people in their department. Anyway, whatever time of day or night, one person goes and is at with that person that put in a call and they're aware of, and if need be, they stay with the person, they're 24 hours a day. Two people, and they stay 24 hours a day with, if they're sending a crisis. So, yeah, I mean, it's just different in cultures, different in sizes, but it's not broken up, you know, this is my department, this is your department, and never in between shall much need to, when there's a situation, you know, that thing.
That cultural distinction is, is significant. And I, there's some, I think some clear pros and cons about the two. And I, there's some, I think some clear pros and cons about the two-day kind of cultural methodologies or styles. So we've tried to be very inclusive with human services in these conversations about the crisis response system because it affects all of Cook County. And are there some benefits and values to having, you know, a larger system that is comprehensive, that supports, you know, both that community as well as the rest of Cook County? We don't know yet. There's, that's still a question that I want to keep asking and exploring. I worry about my colleagues up there, of how long they're going to be able to sustain that particular response, given the, what I think is a growing need across not only Cook but nationwide. I think the pandemic has really affected people's mental health and I think people have, you know, my, my thinking part of my brain is it's in the past, but the body, the rest of my body is still carrying the trauma of that event and I'm still sorting out how I'm reacting in different situations within different relationships. And I think that's true for almost everybody. And our, so our individual capacity and resiliencies are going to allow us to make some decisions to keep us healthy, but other times we're going to run out of that resiliency fuel and we're going to get into more, more crisis-type behaviors. We're going to ask for help differently and that's what those crisis-type behaviors are, is asking for help differently. And so how are we making sure that we've got people safe, you know, in all parts of our county? And do we have the personnel and the systemic responses that address it? What I have heard consistently, I think Matthew has heard this as well from our colleagues up at Grand Portage is their belief in the emergency room response is almost not existent. They don't feel like their, their citizens and their folks are getting good healthcare support from that emergency room. And people go there and they get discharged and then the person is still not in a, you know, healthy place. And that is one of the challenges that we have in the other parts of the county too. What is that next step of when someone is in crisis, the emergency department has assessed the situation and a higher level of care is needed? How do we get that person to that higher level of care? How does that person go there if they're not interested? It's different for children than it is for adults. All those higher level of cares are going to be at Duluth or other points away. So those are all the additional challenges that we're trying to sort out. And it's not just the emergency rooms department, it's not just the mobile crisis response problem, it's not law enforcement's problem, it's our collective problem. And so we, by this cohesive partnership and collaboration, I think is when we're going to get our best potential out there. But it's, there's a lot of threads in this knot of, you know, yarn.
And I think that, that it would not, it would behoove the entire county's health to not, Grand Portage, if there are resources, I don't believe that, that it would be beneficial to have Cook County Social Services be necessarily the first responders to help.
I agree.
It is a community thing.
I agree.
But if there are trainings or, I mean, I, I don't know what, you know, the different things that you have found, but they should not be forgotten because I do know that it's really, has got a pattern to forget about of our neighbors to the east, so.
I think to the same point earlier of, you know, how do you train people to do crisis response? We absolutely need to include the Grand Portage systems, personnel, organizations in all of those trainings.
And they have been.
And they have been. Another element that, this is, this is going to take us off track a little bit, but another side of helping human services has been suicide prevention and a lot of outreach in that respect and from our public health side of things. And so there's been some efforts to do mental health first aid trainings and that's been being offered both all the way across the county, including up at Grand Portage. And that is really kind of the citizen's response to someone in crisis, how do I provide first aid to that crisis until I can get the larger professional systems integrated and intact and engaged? And so it's, you know, there's, again, more sides to this. And we can have professional systems, but we still should rely on our citizens to be, you know, in many respects, the first responders. You know, I liken it to if I come across a car accident and I need to help apply a tourniquet in a moment, then I can do that, but I still need that, you know, EMS crew to come because I'm not a medical provider. I've got other family members that take care of that in my household, but, so, but, mental health is the same thing. We can keep people safe temporarily until we can get larger systems to engage.
Thank you, John. Commissioner Storley, do you still have a question?
Thank you for everything that you've directed in your response to training and to improve the role of HTC and crisis teams and all that. And with your leaving now, what is the next step?
It's a great question, Commissioner Storley. I can attempt an initial response and then ask John and Matthew to help fill in the blanks, but Matthew has indicated a willingness to stay on in a different capacity as a part-time contractor to continue to provide that real systems-level coordination, relationship-building work, developing those protocols, conducting those staff trainings while we concurrently repost to hire for that coordinated response worker position.
Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner, how long do you think that's going to take?
Good question. I have some thoughts on that. So I think if you, if you take the last six months and subtract the first three months of really having no guidance and then the last three months of really starting to dial in, painting a picture of what that response needs to look like. So in the last three months, we went from each one of these eight partner agencies pointing a finger at the other saying that they're to blame for why this is such chaos, to even in the last few weeks, being able to all gather around the same table and say, "We all together are the, are the crisis response in Cook County." And with continuing to build tangible expectations of each other, we can, we can now begin to start responding to crises together. This just happened in the last couple of weeks. So if you take that timeframe and that momentum and if it can continue, I think that can, I think that can be not a perfect process, but I think that can be a process that's underway and, and building in momentum continually now for the next however long it has attention. But I think it, I think it will take probably at least three months of ongoing implementation and evaluation of the roadmap for us to even learn if that's, if this is the, if the map as we have it is going to be the map that's going to stay or if it's going to continue to evolve and change.
Do we have a written report from you of, this is what the roadmap I recommend as of today. Do we have it?
Yes.
Is that available to us as commissioners?
I'll send it to you.
Okay. I want more reading material.
Sure. It's, it's constantly evolving, but it...
Well, that's what I hear. That's why you need three more months to actually see how this might work.
I mean, ideally, I think what would happen from my perspective is that this facilitation process would continue until there's agreements on paper, a protocol agreement on paper.
Service-level agreements like we do with NYS and everything.
Exactly.
Okay, that makes sense.
And then those can be the guiding, those, the roadmap says, says that that's what's needed, but those documents still need to be created and those agreements still need to be forged. And then at that point, because there is a crisis response protocol in place with Public Health and Human Services, but then a, then a crisis responder, the position I was hired for, could be hired with an actual job, like an actual protocol to follow, which when I was hired, there wasn't a protocol to follow. So I think the goal is to make sure that that protocol is in place so that that crisis responder can follow that protocol in conjunction with law enforcement, in conjunction with our emergency room, in conjunction with HTC. And then that can be managed by John because the protocols will be in place. But until those concrete processes are agreed upon, I think we're going to, at this point, the system would just go back, revert back to its old ways of functioning.
Commissioner.
Um, question. Because of a hired consultant, just the basic, are you required to have liability insurance?
As a contracted temporary employee?
Are you a count, called an employee, a temporary, I mean, for, for you would provide consulting services, services, but so you're not going to be an employee anymore, or you are?
Matthew's role would be as a temporary employee or contractor, not as a consultant.
But there's students between a temporary employee and a contractor.
Temporary contractor. So we would develop a temporary employment contract for Matthew.
But not as an employee, but it would be a contractor like we approved today. A contract.
I would equate this more with the temporary staff agreements that we've put into place during employee transitions or to bring staff back on board to provide higher, or training, support when we haven't had overlap between staffs. You might remember Sarah Hadley as an example, she came back as a part-time temporary employee to support onboarding Melissa when she was hired as we didn't have a period of overlap. So that's the, the template that I would be working off of and drafting a job description or position description in a contract to describe Matthew's scope of work as a temporary employee over the course of six months.
Okay. But that's, that's why it's important, language confuses me. Contract employee or temporary employee, two different things. So I just want to make sure we're on the same page of what we're expecting.
Does that feel clear?
No, no, I'm really confused.
I was wondering, yeah.
So does that mean eight o'clock in the morning you show up and you're, have a different title or a different...
So that's great, so that's...
I, I'm just, I thought I had it, now I don't.
Well, it's under discussion, I mean, I personally had some, remember negotiating a contract while being an employee of the county. So there's been, the most of the attention has been to bringing the work that I've done to culmination in this meeting, since today is my last day. And that we have an idea of the work, you know, so from this position, I'm making all of those recommendations. And then we're in a position to now negotiate because I'm not an employee here after today to negotiate what that contract would look like. But it's pretty blurry to try to negotiate your own contract while you're an employee somewhere.
And you can't show up tomorrow because we haven't approved, approved.
Exactly.
Whatever that might be required.
So there will be a brief gap in between Matthew's full end of employment as an employee and coming back on board as a temporary employee.
It looks like we have John and the team to try to keep it in the meanwhile, right?
Yeah.
Keep things, keep our system-building blocks kind of in place and...
And I forgot to mention this, but I did conduct a pretty thorough training with all of the human services staff that staffed the daytime intake on the crisis response protocol that I developed. So they all have a baseline competency and ability to consult with supervisors on that process. And, and so as you all know, that's none of the things I was originally hired to do directly. So this is just, the goal here is just to make what's happening clear on paper and transparent.
Matthew, I'd like to thank you for your work with us, for the guidance and for creating a roadmap. We're no longer, as we often do in Cook County, wander through the woods, but you're making a really great effort to take what you've learned, to take the collaboration that our organizations have had here in the county and build something that will help us in the future. And so I just want to thank you on behalf of the board.
You took the impossible task and you're making it possible.
Fingers crossed. Okay. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate all the information and it's really helped us to, to better understand where we've been, where we are today and the hope that we have for moving forward.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. So at this point, we're going to move on in our agenda and we have a discussion on county public information activities. The board is with us. And Kimber, I see you. Did you want to come and participate in the discussion or are you here for observing?
I'm here to moral support for him and then to answer any questions to get him out of the process.
All right. So if we do have questions, please feel free to come up, take a seat, use the mic. All right, thank you.
Yeah, I'm sure if, if I could. So part of, part of our goal here today, Todd's been on board for a little over a year now and has been doing so much work for us. And I think you're probably aware of it on some level, I mean, the posts on social media, media, the releases that we do, the county connections column that he coordinates. But we wanted to give you a more detailed look at the work that he's doing because it's a lot and it's really good quality work. And it's important to know, public information is a really key element of the work that we do. If, if citizens don't know what county government is doing, then we're not doing our jobs because people deserve to know, right? We're spending tax dollars to, to provide services and it's really important that people understand what that work looks like. So the other thing I wanted to note, Kimber is here. This is a partnership, this position is a partnership with North Shore Health and it has been so for the last two-plus years actually. And so I just want to thank Kimber for being here today, first of all, and for the partnership because I think this is something that's really benefiting both organizations significantly. And Kimber, if you do have anything that you'd like to offer in terms of your experience working with, with Todd and with the county to, to share this position, that would be great.
Well, how about, I can do this presentation so you can go see it and then I can chime in because I think you'll have a much better, fuller picture of all the work.
All right, sounds good.
All right, well, thanks for being with us, Todd, and we appreciate your patience this morning. We have a long agenda.
Well, thanks for having me and thanks Kimber for coming to appreciate the support. As James said, I just wanted to give you an overview of the things that I've been doing since I came a little bit, a little over a year ago. And Jan Al, this kind of goes line by line instead of screen by screen, so if you can just kind of follow what I do, should be good.
Thank you.
So communications overview, that's me, larger than life. This, as James mentioned, is a shared position between Cook County and North Shore Health. The title is the same, but the missions are different, as you might imagine. I work 20 hours a week per entity. I started in March of 2022. My background is both creative and strategic leader for a variety of advertising, marketing firms, also hospitality and casino firms in Chicago, Las Vegas, Grand Portage, and now Cook County. My most recent position before joining here was as Director of Marketing for Grand Portage Lodging and Casino, where I worked for three years. There was no room for me here at the inn, so I've got an office up at North Shore Health, just down the hall from Kimber. Thank you for that, Kimber. It's, it's a good space and it's a great place to base out of and I'm two minutes away from here, so it works out well. My strengths are in corporate communications, public relations, media relations, social media, copywriting, creative direction, graphic design. copywriting, creative direction, graphic design, photography, video production, and website maintenance.
These are just professionals.
Well, I also work out in the morning. Some goals of mine for this job, to establish and maintain an efficient structure and process for this position, to champion the Cook County, Minnesota brand, give strong leadership to the Communications Committee, to earn community trust with timely and factual communications, try to continue, do continuous improvement of all the communications programs, maintain strong relationships with local media, strike an equitable and efficient balance of work between the two employers, continue to hone my PR and communication skills, and in my spare time, have a good time living in Cook County. The Communications Committee, you'll see them pictured there. Basically, I work with the administrative, executive administrative assistant to establish those bi-weekly meeting agendas. And it's great having Jana onboard. Our committee meets every other week by way of teams. The members of that committee are James, the administrator, two people from PHHS, MIS, county attorney, emergency management, Sheriff Pat, Jana, and myself. And in those meetings, we review, discuss, and plan all of the upcoming County Connections articles, calendar of events for different, excuse me, a calendar of upcoming events and topics that we can use to address in social media. Media releases, old business and new business. For the County Connections articles, that Communications Committee determines the content, the author, and the schedule for those articles. And that's based on messaging priority, timeliness, seasonal relevance, and if the author is actually available to get the job done. So I will coordinate with the author of that article. They, they send me a draft. I put it into our branded format and put in my redline edit recommendations. Sometimes they're this many, sometimes they're this many, it varies. I route it for approvals and/or input. Once it's approved, I distribute it with the headshot of the author to Cook County News Herald. And that's due every Tuesday. That's their deadline for the Friday publication. I also take, once it's sent to the paper, I send it, share it in advance to the commissioner's team, to the Communications Committee, and to MAT. On Friday, once those articles have been published, then I send it out to the rest of the local media, to Boreal, WTIP, Lake Superior News, Northern Wilds, and so forth. I also do a posting on the website of the article. I share it on Facebook and Instagram, and I also archive it in our team's archives. I don't typically author these articles, although I did write the welcome to employees one that we ran recently. And my guess is we'll probably be doing those periodically as we have a gap in the schedule and/or new employees to welcome. I have developed a strong working relationship with Brian Larson at the Herald and that comes in handy frequently because we have a tendency to push the deadlines once in a while. One of the things I developed was a spreadsheet, just to track all of the articles that we do. In 2022, we did 50 County Connections articles. I handled all but seven of those since I arrived in March. This is the spreadsheet. I actually printed this out and had handouts to give everybody. It's sitting on my desk up at the North Shore Health. So I can, I can forward these to you so it's not such fine print, but it gives you at a glance the date, the article title, the author, the department, and if there's any commentary that came up with that. Media releases. So these come to me from different department leaders or somebody that they've assigned within their department. Again, I replace them into our branded media release format. There are many occasions where they need to be co-branded with a third-party partner. Similar process, I edit and share both clean and redline versions with that author to review and, or, and approve. Once it's approved, I distribute it to local media unless, or whatever the messaging is, if it needs to go beyond to regional or beyond, we can do that as well. I always provide Word, PDF and text versions of the same thing to make it easy for the media to receive it and whatever works best for them. Similarly, I send a copy to Commissioner's Communications and MAT teams. Similarly to the others, I place it on the website, post to Facebook and Instagram, and archive it on Teams. Once in a while, somebody has a need for having a flyer created that's related to that piece that needs to be distributed to local bulletin boards. I just do that on request as opposed to a matter of course. Otherwise, we'd have nothing but Cook County bulletins on the bulletin boards. I refined the format a little bit by adding a boilerplate and about us section, sort of the elevator pitch for Cook County, Minnesota, that appears at the bottom of every media release. In 2022, we did, we distributed 54 media releases. That was after I started in March, so I'm sure there were more than that. Just as a point of reference, we're on pace now in 2023 to do 80. So we've stepped it up a bit. On a similar basis, I did another spreadsheet for all of our media releases, which I can share with you after the meeting. Photography and videography. I photographed, retouched, and uploaded headshots of many of our department heads, photographed the board and for web and social media, photographed the new employees for that welcome article. I photographed a number of the facility's exteriors. When I can break away for a few minutes and the weather's cooperating, I shoot some landscapes and so forth that we can put to use in both website and social media. One of the things that I found when I arrived was that there didn't seem to be any repository of imagery and so forth. And so I developed a structured image library of photos, logos, graphic elements. And I've done a mirrored version for them at North Shore Health. But it's grown immensely and it'll be a great resource for us going forward. When you're looking for something, it's there, it's your beck and call as opposed to having to go hunt. I shot video of capital improvement plan, open houses, part one and two, and uploaded those to YouTube. And we got a video editing program called Cyberlink Power Director, which is a fancy name, but I've taught myself how to use that. It's kind of a deep program, so I'm not expert at it, but I'm serviceable and I've put it to pretty good use so far. Our website. On a regular basis, I'm updating the website with articles, media releases, news releases, public notices. On request, which I receive fairly frequently, are text edits and updating of documents for a variety of departments. The heavy users are Land Services, Auditor Treasurer, and Highway Department. One of the things that we found was structurally on that homepage was that we couldn't see very much at one time. And there was a lot of content that was being loaded and pushed, things pushed off the page. So the people would have to click the arrows to kind of go below the fold to find what they're looking for. And you still have to do that to some degree. You can't have it all up there. But now there are, at a glance, more things that we've posted recently for people to find. Seasonally, I replaced those beauty shots that are at the top of the piece there. I call them marquee sliders because they slide across through the image on the homepage. And I use the website as my daily portal for getting in and out of social media. Visual identity manual. This is a project that was initiated by one of my predecessors but abandoned when they left and didn't get very far. But I have completed that. I had a lot of input from James and from Molly. And when I say completed, it's a living document. We can keep making it better and adding to it as we go along. But in that, it establishes brand guidelines for logos, stationery, advertising, collateral, fonts, social media, signage, media releases, vehicle graphics, email signatures, and logo wear. For social media, I developed consistent design standards for brand recognition. One of the things I found when I arrived was there seemed to be little rhyme or reason as to what our posts looked like, how they, and they just weren't supporting the brand consistently. So I wanted to make them more visually compelling. And it's pretty simple, big, big pictures and minimal text. Previously, there was a lot of, sort of a text dump right into the visual, which is not very compelling. So there's a place for the pictures with minimal, get their attention with the key messaging and put all the rest of it in the caption place where it belongs. I also here developed a convention for co-branding with other partners, which we use quite frequently. I started adding not just our website link so it will push people to visit our website, but also relevant hashtags for search purposes. So I monitored these pages daily and respond when it's appropriate. As a rule, not a lot of give and take. Most things that people do are like or love or share or whatever. Occasionally, you'll get somebody with a snarky response. And if it's their opinion, it's their opinion. If it goes over the, over the edge, then we have the, it's within our policy to address that and hide it or report them as appropriate. And on that topic, I have consulted with James and Molly and we've, we're, we have a bit of a overview of how we're going to be handling sensitive commentary. But in general, we don't want to stoke the fire and, and get into a community argument. I also worked with Molly on the Social Media Action Plan, which includes an overview, let's see, I can tell you what's included in that. Scope, overview, vision, social media strategy, comment and policy enforcement, goals, target audiences, staff resources, the process for posting, marketing and public outreach, records retention, and success metrics. In 2022, starting in March, we did 307 Facebook posts. We did 285 Instagram posts in that same period. For the most part, we're able to build, I mean, there are different formats, to build a version that works for both. But not every message that we put out is Instagram appropriate. It's really a place where people look to go for pretty pictures and so forth. So if it's a message that doesn't quite fit that, well, it's better to leave it off and just do it on Facebook. But we do have different audiences on Facebook and Instagram, so it's nice to, wherever possible, to duplicate so we reach more people. In addition to those numbers, there are a lot of shares of the Sheriff's Department from PHHS and other relevant posts. I started tracking analytics for social media. It took me a few months to ramp up and get doing it, but I started in June of 2022. And then I got ultra-busy and didn't do it again until September. So there's a gap there. But it gives us a, a little bit of a window of how we performed from June to December. And I like to look at things as a percentage change as opposed to just a numbers change. And we showed either medium to strong growth in every category except for two. And that was following. And the other one was link clicks. Now, following, it's not followers, it's, it's who we're following. And I've actually gone through some of those and culled out a few of them. Things that people or individuals who just didn't seem appropriate for us to be following. That's why that number has gone down a little bit. The other number, link clicks, concerned me a little bit. So I did cast forward a little bit to February of this year just to see how we're doing. And we've overcome that particular issue. But the notable increases have been followers, reach, engagement, reactions, comments, and photo views. So we've shown nice progress. Because this is not a huge community, we're never going to see massive numbers. It's not like we put out things that are going to go viral, per se.
Yeah.
This could be viral. Just a question, the followers, does that mean like if we're following?
Dave Mills. Cook County is following Dave Mills.
So you would, so for instance, it would be decided that maybe we shouldn't have a link to follow your Facebook posts. Is that what you mean?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's right. One day I'll be there too, but it'll be a while.
Do we have any idea, I mean, first off, awesome, just the roll of them. Those, those statistics are really helpful, but do we have any idea about the link click? Like what, I mean, it's a huge change in 2023 now too. I mean, is it a content issue, is it a, or a topic issue or a?
It's, it's really tough to get it dialed in. But I think part of it's seasonal and topical. But I think also it's a consistency of the program by making sure that you get the appropriate links in there. You know, a lot of people don't like to click through links.
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah, and it can cause, if it's not something you trust, it can be a problem. And for example, in Instagram, you only get one link and that's the link, our link tree. And that's a, that's a broader thing that contains our most commonly used links. So in all the copy where we might have one, two, three different links to different things, I have to peel that out and direct them to the link tree to make sure that they can go find what they're looking for at the appropriate place. I mean, Facebook also, excuse me, Instagram also has a much stricter limit on text length. For example, the, many of the PHHS posts have a tendency to be this long for good reason. There's a lot of content, it's important content, but it doesn't all fit in Instagram. So I'll tailor that to cut off at a certain point and tell them to read the entire piece, go to our link tree and click on to either see this on our website or on the Facebook post where it has the complete copy.
Any, so there's the three D's, right? Facebook, Instagram, and YouTube. Has it, have you thought about going up broader as well or?
You know, just about everywhere I've worked has that same question. Should we be on Snapchat or Twitter or? Yeah, exactly. And between the two entities, I honestly don't see drilling deeper than this having much value. For one thing, I'd probably be spread. For one thing, I'd probably be spread a little thinner than would be appropriate, and I don't see it having a big upside. Twitter in particular doesn't have a large following in Minnesota.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Especially now that NPR is up there, too.
Just a few more things, signage and collateral. I do quite a bit more of this for North Shore Health than I have for the county, but I did create a recruitment rack card that's very evergreen, they can use indefinitely. Created a flyer for HR that they can use at job fairs with a QR code. Designed a trifold brochure for PHHS on healthy households. Created a new table bunting for job fairs and Fishman's Picnic, which, there you go, there's Fish Pick, and that's the piece for job fairs. So that's me in a snapshot. What questions can I answer for you?
I was just looking up our website and our picture. Now, when I do it on my small phone, I don't get the whole picture.
That's right. It's not as, formatting is not quite exactly responsive, it's not apples to apples.
Two people.
Right. Again, because it's this way instead of this way, right? That's something that was pre-established before I came, but if it did show the whole thing, you wouldn't be able to read all the little itty-bitty text that accompanies it.
That brings a question to me. Are there other than opportunities to make it more mobile-friendly or? I feel like there's a lot of users, right, that are primarily mobile users.
Absolutely, yeah. That's what, that's the rule of thumb today, yeah. That's something we can definitely look into.
One of the things I want to comment on is just how many more people go to the county website now than they used to, and I get comments in the community. I just think you've done a great job of attracting people to the website, and it's a great way for us to communicate. And as James mentioned when he introduced you, that's this whole point, getting the communication out, getting the word out. And that is not something I heard from constituents a couple of years ago, but now they're going to the county website. It's easier to navigate, they like what they see, and I think you've brought some consistency to it that users really appreciate, and so I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. It's great to hear.
And I want to thank Kimber for her working collaboratively with us. This is such a needed position, but it's something neither one of us could have done on our own, and it's just been a phenomenal opportunity to work together. Anything that you would like to share, Kimber, from your perspective?
Well, I guess I'd like to reiterate kind of the importance of, I think, the position and the value that I think we've had with the collaborative and the shared relationship. You know, how this started a little bit was, you know, at least I'm from the North Shore Health side because that's more out there than we, right, is, was, you know, just how do we make this happen routinely? And literally, I was going to people and saying, hey, you know, can I share? I'm visiting the county, can I share a part of your person, you know, to look at that? And it was at that time, it was like, well, how about the county? Because the county's looking at something. And, you know, James had just gotten here, it's like, James? Is this something that you're willing to talk about? Can we consider that? And I think the value, again, to both of us is, probably will never be determined by us generally because there are so many people out there that are using the communication tools that we're trying to share. And much like you say, the websites, you know, if your website is static, if it doesn't have information, people aren't going to use it. And so, but it also takes talent, it takes time to be able to have that content, which, you know, we didn't have at North Shore Health, don't think you guys had it here, and so then being able to have that shared relationship, and in a way that was as cost-effective to both of us as possible. And I think that's the other piece that I think is important, is, you know, I couldn't have done a full-time person on my own. You know, if you guys could, the fact that maybe by sharing it, we could both get a wonderful product and a wonderful opportunity, and, you know, I came and said, hey, I'm interested in working with you guys, thank goodness, and being able to do that. And I think we've even, we've shared some equipment, we've just tried to be able to do that, some of the software, you know, so that we can both be more cost-effective and nimble. I, like I said, I'll walk into his office sometimes, and he'll just show me something, and I can't figure out which computer, because he has two of them sitting there, and I'm like, you know, it's like, no, you have to, you know, drive the, you know, drive the mouse up on this one, not on that one. I remember if it's the county's down below or the North Shore Health's up the top or vice versa, it's just, it's, so we have that. But, you know, again, I, because I want to say I appreciate and thank you for the opportunity because I don't know that we would have had it without.
Well, I think it's a win-win for our entire community, and I want to thank you for being here today and staying here with us, Todd, and again, I appreciate the collaboration that we have. Commissioner Mills.
Follow up, Commissioner Hawkins.
Okay.
I have to wait through because I write down my questions while you're talking, and then you answer them, so. Figure out.
I'll go first, I'll go.
No, I got it right here. So you talked about our, the logo imagery that was done by our previous part-time information person, and you're updating that. I'm wondering, how are you going about documenting those procedures and things in case? Oh, you know, not saying you should be leaving, but what happens next? To make sure we don't go take a step backwards. What are you doing to make sure succession plan, you know, that sort of thing, documenting what you're doing so it's always there, we don't have to start from scratch?
Are you talking specifically about the brand identity?
Brand identity, but also the imagery repository that you have, that we don't lose what you've been doing, making sure it stays in our system.
One of my faults is being, what's the nice word for it? I'm pretty persnickety about my file structure. Persnickety's a nice way to put it. You can probably imagine where my mind was going. Anyway, it's deep, and it's structured, and it's resident on my computers, so if I go off in a puff of smoke tomorrow, everything's easy to find.
So if I'm your personal, if, I mean, for a county.
This is a county piece here, and it's, so we use SharePoint for communications, document storage.
Okay, so that's why we make sure it was on our server.
Yes, yeah, actually, yeah, this doesn't hold that much. It's, yeah.
Just didn't want the hospital to have.
No, it's got our stuff on our H drive, so, you know.
Okay, so that's, that's what it is. Where is that stuff?
Hopefully, I'll be around for a while, but I understand your concern, and it's all easy to find and easily structured to follow.
Well, and I think you've also been working on, like, brand standards, man, much like for ours, is how, you know, how you use your brand, kind of those things, you know, doing the same thing for.
And that's, it's shared with the entire communications team and so forth, and on Teams. We've used the Teams structure pretty well to be archiving all kinds of content.
And it's really, I mean, consistency in how you represent the brand is really important in helping the public recognize that something is official and it's coming from the county or the hospital. Because like Todd said before, we were really inconsistent with how we, how things looked, and it's really helpful, I think, to the public to have a format that is recognizable where people can immediately say, oh, that's from the county, so. And I just really appreciate the professionalism and the structure that you've brought to our communication efforts, because I think that's really important and effective communication. Thank you.
Commissioner Mills, your question.
Oh, well, I just wanted to share that, sitting on the, as the county board de- is on the hospital board, before Todd was hired, I heard about it clear from the hospital board how much they wanted to get their message out more. We need to share this information, we can't have rumors going about all this stuff. And, you know, there's always that obstacle to overcome, and I don't know, we can have two Tods, but I'm often reminding the hospital board of like, hey, this is a very valuable thing, and from my perspective, and I'm creating conflict here both between the hospital and the county, as well as between probably us commissioners, just that I think we need more, we need more communication, we need more information out there, keep pushing, there's a lot of misinformation out there, and it's just this uphill battle constantly. But what I would like to also say is just that when Todd joined, and so, thank you for your partnership there, and really value that, but when Todd joined the team, James made a point of saying, you don't even know, like, the value, just instantly, of the repository, your experience, your expertise, your skill set, it's just, we didn't even know what we didn't have. And so, thank you for adding that to the team, and just invaluable, and I really, really appreciate all of what you've done.
Thank you, thank you.
So we're going to take one more question because we have another group coming in here in two minutes.
Okay.
Oh, I guess, I'll talk to him after. It's just, remember that you can't get enough information out there for Pete.
Right.
So he could work every day, all day long, all day, and it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
But it does matter.
It matters a lot.
But you have to, you have to make the effort, yeah.
Not hurt.
No, I agree, but you'll never, you have to have the effort, and sometimes time, energy, those types of things, if you don't have intentional messaging, you lose that as well. And so, the value is having intentional messaging, you're putting it there, and you may have individuals that aren't interested, don't care. It's kind of like, what, you guys do CTs? I didn't know that. It's like, because you don't care about it until you need it. All right? And that's the, that's kind of the point, so.
Oh, yeah, I'm not disputing the point at all, but it's just, we don't need two Tods, we just need to.
Three Tods.
Hammering away.
Yeah, yeah. But you had a munch now, or what's the?
Well, I want to thank you on behalf of, I'm not going to say our board, our community, for all the information you provided us, all the facts that you've shared, and the direction you've given our community in challenging times. So thank you so much for being here today and continuing to be with our organizations in the future.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So as we.
We have your turn.
As we get ready to conclude our meeting, I just want to let you know that the other item there, the discretionary funding policy, there are two forms that are there, and the reason they're here is for information purposes. We will be taking action on those at our next county board meeting, but if you have questions about forms, Commissioner Hawkins and I, Administrator Yorki, and our auditor, Greedy Powers, have all sat on that committee and have looked at the forms in the process. We're not ready to bring forward a policy, which is why the minutes for the Budget Advisory Committee are attached. So you can see, we are nowhere close to a policy, but we do have some forms we'd like to adopt at our next board meeting that are very important to the process. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
No, ma'am.
No, so.
All right, we're done.
I was attacked. I was attacked. I was just saying that there was not consensus, I didn't feel like a budget advisory should have.